A meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. As a preliminary matter, my name is William McCusker. I am the vice chair of the zoning board of appeals. At this time, I'd like to confirm that all members or persons anticipated on the agenda, the president can hear me specifically remotely. So really, the important member or staff is Attorney Heap. If you could just acknowledge you can hear us and we can hear you, please.
I can hear you perfectly fine.
All right, we can hear you. Thank you. The other five members here and present. So this open meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with the governor's executive orders due to the state emergency and the Commonwealth COVID-19. In order to mitigate transmission of COVID-19, we've been allowed to have these hybrid meetings. The order we should find on the town's website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public will follow along. And we've done that for this meeting. We're convening by video conference or Zoom as posted on the town's website. The meeting is being recorded. Some attendees are participating by video conference. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to share your screen or your computer because it will be recorded. Anything broadcast will be captured and recorded. All the meeting materials are available on the town's website, except for anything that may be presented this evening. I think that's sufficient. Let me have this back. As a first order of business, what I'd like to do is open case number, where in my agenda go? Case number 903, which is 25 East Street, request overturn decision as ZEO. Let me make sure I'm doing this in the right order here. At this time, I'd ask the board to introduce themselves. We'll start, Owen, Mr. Thomas.
Jiffy Thomas.
Bill Yeomans, member at large.
William McCusker, vice chairman.
Alex Mejia, associate member.
Kay Reed, clerk.
Katrina.
Oh, sorry, Katrina Koshvov, CBA secretary.
Bob Berger, zoning enforcement officer.
Thank you. The way we'll proceed is a clerk will read the petition, and after the clerk has read the petition, the petitioner will have the floor and will have the opportunity to present their case. There'll be a 15-minute time limit for the petitioner. This time limit can be extended only with consent of the board. The petitioner shall present required information, and all comments should be specific. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition will have an opportunity to do so. Any letters in favor will be acknowledged for the record. Anybody in opposition is allowed to speak, and any letters in opposition will be acknowledged for the record, and the opposition will also have a 15-minute time limit. After all the evidence is presented, the board will enter discussion and hopefully come up with a decision. Anyone wishing to speak, oh, wait, wait. At any time during this hearing and prior to a decision being made by this board, the petitioner has the option to request that the petition be withdrawn without prejudice or continued until a later date at which time further evidence and support of the petition can be presented. Anyone wishing to speak, please approach one of the microphones, give your name and address for the record. Board may ask questions from time to time, however, all conversations should be directed through the chair. This time, I'd ask the clerk to read the petition.
The Grafton Board of Appeals has received a petition from 25 East Street LLC requesting that the zoning board of appeals overturn the decision of the zoning enforcement officer and the building inspector dated April 18th, 2024. The board will conduct a public hearing on June 26, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in Conference Room A at the municipal center, 30 Providence Road in Grafton to consider this request and/or take whatever action is necessary, including the granting of a finding, special permit, variance, or other necessary relief allowed under the zoning bylaw. Any person wishing to be heard in conjunction with this request should appear at the time and place designated or by letter to this board in time to be read at the hearing. This meeting will be a hybrid meeting conducted in person and remotely. Zoning Board of Appeals, William McCusker, Kay Reed, William Yeomans, Peter Adams, Jiffy Thomas, Alex Mejia, and Brian Waller.
Thank you. At this point, I need to appoint our two associate members. You're both associate members, right? Yeah. Mr. Mejia and Mr. Thomas as voting members on this, so we'll have a five-member board. And at this point, I turn it over to the applicant or appellant. Yeah, come on up, join us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Henry Lane, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And just as a matter of formality, and I just noticed this moments ago, the notice identifies 25 East Street LLC as the applicant, but in fact, the application was filed by Carlos Baez, who was the subject of the enforcement order. I don't know if that's a substantive problem, but 25 East Street LLC is the owner of the property, but is not the occupant of the property. So again, it's a technical matter, but that's the way your notice went out, and I apologize for not having noticed that earlier.
But does it say his name anywhere on the actual?
It just says signature petitioner, Henry Lane, for Carlos Baez, print name. So I went under the property owner of 25 East Street.
That being the case, so I'm here this evening on behalf of Carlos Baez, and I know this has been an issue that's been pending for some time, and it's somewhat complicated, so I'll spend my, I hope not my entire 15 minutes, but just explaining a little bit what's going on. The property of 25 East Street, if you're familiar with the property at all, it's been used as a, well, actually, as a trucking company. The last time I dealt with the property, it was a full-blown trucking company, and it was a trucking company for decades, if not longer. Apparently, and again, I don't know all the details, I don't know if anybody does, apparently at some point, the then owners of the property ran into some financial difficulty, so there was a, we'll call it an involuntary disposition of the property. In other words, apparently, there was a foreclosure, and that meant that the occupant of the property was not using it, I guess, for a period of time. Exactly how long, we don't know, but I guess it's our position that to the extent that it was not continuously used, it was an involuntary cessation, and it was not an abandonment in the sense that somebody, you know, just dropped the use of it or discontinued it voluntarily. It was an involuntary discontinuance. And again, as I say, I don't know exactly how long with the period it was discontinued involuntarily, but apparently, there is some evidence that it was involuntarily discontinued. But I guess it's our position from a technical point of view, since the discontinuance, the temporary discontinuance was involuntary, it did not terminate the grandfathering rights on the property. And so, you know, argument number one, it's a grandfathered use, and as long as it doesn't go beyond the use that was in effect historically, it is not a violation because it is, and I guess we're not allowed to use the word grandfather anymore because that has apparently connotations that go back to the Civil War, which I won't get into. We'll call it a pre-existing nonconforming use, which I guess is a technical term. So that's the first issue. And the second and probably more important issue from our point of view is that as we read the bylaws, and again, having been on both sides of the issue, I know that sometimes it's very difficult to anticipate every potential use of property and the implications of the actual language that's used in the drafting of a bylaw. But let me suggest to you that from our point of view, when we look at the bylaw and its prohibition against servicing motor vehicles, we anticipate, we expect that the drafter anticipated that there would be a prohibition on operating a automobile service station. In other words, a business that takes in motor vehicles and does motor vehicle repairs and those kinds of things. And it's our position that it was not intended to address the issue of an individual who services occasionally is on motor vehicles. And as you undoubtedly are aware, if you follow popular culture, they are not unusual for individuals to have significantly large collections of motor vehicles, particularly if they're in, have the resources to be involved with collector-type cars. So again, that's not uncommon, and it's our position basically that the current occupant, Mr. Baez, who was the current tenant, and primarily his brother, who is actually the one who uses the garage, is not running a service station. He is not taking in cars, repairing them, sending them out. He is using the garage, but he's using the garage for his own motor vehicles. And again, as I look at it and I look at the zoning map of the town of Grafton, and I'm saying, you know, roughly half of the town, maybe slightly less, slightly more, but a very significant portion of the town is in the watershed protection overlay district. And if you accept the argument that, quote, "servicing motor vehicles" is to be taken literally, that would mean approximately half of the people in town cannot legally change a tire on their car, or more importantly today, they cannot plug in their electric vehicle because that is servicing a vehicle. And if we accept the very broad interpretation of servicing, one cannot legally plug in their electric vehicle, they could not change and repair their own tire, they can essentially do nothing. They can't wash their car and polish their car. All that is servicing a motor vehicle, and it's all the kind of activity that I think we all understand to be well within what's allowed. And, you know, I'm old enough and probably older than most of you, so my memory goes back a little further, and I remember well as a teenager that everybody changed their own oil, you know? In those days, of course, we used it to kill grass, which we don't do that anymore. And I'm not suggesting that should be permitted, but, you know, minor service on your own motor vehicle has always, in my view, been allowed and been common, a common activity that's associated with residential use. So as I said, when I look at the bylaw, I can't anticipate that the voters really intended that people would not be able to essentially do anything with respect to their motor vehicle. Now, I admit that, well, Mr. Baez's brother, you know, he's a little more intensive in his use because he's into working on his own cars. And again, that's not an uncommon hobby. There's plenty of people that have, that, as I say, collective-type vehicles or even not collective-type vehicles, that just like puttering with motor vehicles as a hobby. And again, not an uncommon hobby, a fairly typical kind of hobby, and, you know, Mr. Baez does it on a little larger scale than I would do because I have a day job, but again, the fact that his use or his involvement with his, well, his sideline, I'll say, is a hobbyist is a little more expansive than perhaps your eyes does not make it, in my view, illegal. So again, we have a complex relationship because we have Mr. Baez and Mr. Baez. Mr. Baez lives on the property. His brother technically is the renter, but his brother uses the garage, so we have, again, a complicated relationship. We have two brothers, and one of whom is the legal tenant, the other one who actually uses the property. And so, I, you know, suggestion in the building inspector's initial report that it's unlinked, and I think, you know, with the family relationship, again, I don't think any of us would argue that, look, you know, I have an extra bay in my garage, and, you know, I'm prohibited from allowing my brother to use it. I don't think anybody would rationally interpret the bylaw to say, you know, that's an independent use, and that allowing your brother to use your garage is a zoning violation. But again, literally, if you take the order the way it's written, that's the interpretation you have to read, you have to come to. So I would strongly recommend that the zoning board not interpret its bylaws in such a way, so restrictively, because, you know, as I say, I suspect that Mr. Berger, I know he's a very capable fellow and has lots of ability, but I don't think he wants to spend the rest of his years as the building commissioner going out chasing down people who are inflating their own tires or washing their own cars because you came to the conclusion that servicing your own vehicles is a zoning violation in the watershed protection overlay district in the entire town. So item number one, we think the use is long-grandfathered. Number two, we don't operate a service station. People don't come to this place to get their car serviced. I, you know, I don't know what Mr. Berger is going to say, but from everything I've heard in the short time I've been involved in this situation, he has never indicated that he has seen anybody come to these premises or leave these premises to have a motor vehicle serviced. There's certainly no signage out there, there's no advertising, this is somebody who is servicing their own collection of vehicles. And then interestingly enough, the second part of the order suggests that Mr. Baez is required to remove the lift from his property. And again, I don't see anything in the bylaw that says you can't have a motor vehicle lift in your property. Again, I don't have a lift on my property, and I suspect that most of you don't, but many people do. If you look at Jay Leno, who has a large car collection, occasionally stores a vehicle on a lift. If you've ever parked in New York City on a, on a, on an open parking lot, you'll see lifts all over the place because you can double the capacity of your parking lot if you have lifts. And if you go, as I say, around Lower Manhattan, you will see that most of the surface lots are equipped with hydraulic lifts so that they can lift cars up and park underneath them. So again, as I say, there's nothing in the bylaw that I see that says you can't have a lift on your property. You can't use it to service, you know, to run a garage, I understand that, but if you do enough work on your own cars that you think it's easier to work on your own cars with a lift, I don't see that there's prohibition in the bylaw with respect to that. So, you know, the third and fourth are basically just sort of duplicative. Again, it's our position that, you know, storing a motor vehicle on your property is not a violation. We all, you know, we all do that. Everybody understands that storing a motor vehicle on your property is permitted. Otherwise, we'd have all biked to the town hall, I didn't see any bikes out there. So I suspect that most of you drove motor vehicles because you own motor vehicles, and I suspect that most of you park your motor vehicles at your home, whether or not you live in a watershed protection overlay district. So it suggests that the storage of motor vehicles is not a violation of any of the bylaws. So again, that's an outline of the case. We have lots of people here who can testify, but our outline is we're not running an automotive service station. That's not what we're doing. We have, and I will admit, we have more cars than most people have on their property, but that doesn't make it illegal. This is an individual who uses a garage that's technically rented by his brother to maintain his own motor vehicles, and we don't think that's a violation, and we would ask that the board come to that conclusion as well. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Sure.
When did that foreclosure occur?
Oh, it was in the mid-teens, I think. Almost the teens.
Okay. And what was it, you used a term that the service business had ceased involuntary, is that what you used, the term?
Yeah, involuntarily, the foreclosure, you know.
So it was involuntary abandonment, is what you were saying?
Yeah, yeah. The argument is that we didn't voluntarily stop using, the user wasn't voluntarily stopping the use, he was forced to stop it, so.
Yeah, understood. Okay. So where our bylaw says any nonconforming structure or use which has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years shall not reestablish except in performance with its bylaw, that doesn't say anything about voluntary or involuntary, it's pretty clear. Is there any case law you want to cite that's, that's, well, it's actually, if it's involuntary, then this doesn't apply?
Actually, there is some case law, and again, unfortunately, I didn't bring my legal library with me, but cases are all over the place, but there are, in fact, I've been involved in a case myself very similar to this where, you know, the town just concluded that the intent is important, and in order for you to come within the exception or the limitation, there has to be an intent to discontinue or abandon. If you don't intend to do it and somehow forces beyond your control result in a discontinuance, you know, that's not covered because it's the intent to discontinue or abandon. If there was no intent and it was involuntary, then the pre-existing nonconforming status does not terminate. So I think that's a reasonable interpretation, that's what other towns have done in some of the case law.
Well, you know, it seems to me if you want this member to vote in support of your petition, you'd have a lot more detail of the abandonment and the involuntary nature of it, starting with when this supposedly occurred. But let's move on from that.
Okay.
These pictures that I have were taken today. I see three automobiles in various states repaired. We were to run the license plates, I mean, are we all going to come back to Mr. Baez's brother?
That's my understanding.
Well, yes or no?
I didn't run them, so I can't tell you what the answer is, my understanding.
Maybe you might want to ask your client.
Well.
Are these all owned by Mr. Baez?
I have the titles for all those cars, yes.
You own all these cars?
Yes, I do. I have the titles, I could bring them tomorrow if you want.
The titles are in your name?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, other questions from the board? Anyone have any questions or comments?
I do.
Mr. Thomas?
I don't know if it is appropriate, but can you give us an approximate count of how many vehicles you have or you own?
Can't hear you. And actually, maybe.
How many cars do you own?
Yeah, I need to come through the microphone.
Give me your name, please.
My name is Carlos Baez, so I own like 10 vehicles over there.
And the follow-up, is the lift indoor or is it left outside the?
It's indoor.
Do we have more copies of these pictures or might just one other copy?
Yeah, one other copy, I can pull them up. I have a question, question here.
Mr. or Ms. Reed?
Is there any issue with oil or anything that's being drained and not properly discarded or anything like that?
So I work at AutoZone, and at AutoZone, I dispose the oil myself.
So you?
So as soon as I give my car oil change, I dispose of the oil myself.
You take it there.
Yeah, because they.
It's not being done on site.
It's not being done outside, it's being done inside, and I dispose of it, right, in the container where the new oil comes, so I just bring it back and dispose of it at my job.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I do have one more question. Attorney Lane, you said that you don't have something like this because you have a day job. Are you implying that Mr. Baez does not have a day job? And, you know, if not, then what is his source of income?
I think he just testified he works at AutoZone. He does this at night, maintains this, you know, like most of us do, we.
All right. Other questions? Mr. Berger, you care to opine on anything here?
I would. So first of all, the Hayes Trucking, because that's what was there before, abandoned their corporation in 1999. So as far as all the documents that I have, 1999 is when that was dis dissolved, okay? The lift, talking about the lift, this has been in litigation three times, I think, maybe more. And the orders were from not Grafton's bylaw, but from the judge, remove, stop all the cars, the vehicles, remove the lift. So the lift isn't our bylaw, it's the judge's orders to remove the lift. In, where's that? It's right here. In 2012, the applicant went in front of the planning board to take the single family and to convert it into a two-family where it's an R20 zone, because that's what we're talking about in our 20s. And the only way to have a two-family in an R20 zone is a special permit through the planning board. Nowhere in this document does it say we're going to have a two-family and another commercial business, because basically what we're talking about here is we're talking about an accessory building that has to be part of the two-family, because if you don't do that, now you have a commercial enterprise on that property, and that's what we're talking about, because he doesn't live there, and he's renting that, that's now a commercial enterprise. That was one, that was two. And the unregistered vehicles, you're allowed to have on your property one unregistered vehicle if it's roadworthy. I was there today, I counted 10 or 11 un-roadworthy vehicles. And with the oil that you're talking about, that's what we have the water protection overlay for, is to protect our groundwater. And, you know, fine, he gets rid of some of the oil, but I have seen it from the roadway, from the public roadway, of slicks all over the ground, all right? So this is, we've been in front of the courts since 2018. This is a new avenue that we're at right now, and this is, this is kind of my case. Any other questions? We have a question.
Mr. Yeomans?
It's a two-family, and the garage that's to the left of that two-family is being rented to the brother?
To the brother. And that's where we have, that's where we have the problem, that's where the problem starts.
It's, and actually, it's being rented to the brother, not sublet, but rented to the brother by the landlord.
That's correct.
Okay. Not that it would matter, I don't think.
No, but it's facts.
I think it's, yeah, okay.
By, not by the brother, so it's not a selet, the landlord is renting the garage.
This gentleman here writes a check every month to that gentleman.
Okay.
The owner of the property. And then what I'm hearing here from Attorney Lane is he lets his brother go in there and do whatever, and I don't know any of that, but that's what just came out of this hearing.
There's a picture in there of, yeah, right there, Jiffy's got it, it looks like a record, says Baez out to the other side, what's that business?
That's a, that's a car hauling company that I had before.
Okay.
And it's no longer, it's no longer running now, it's no longer running.
Uh, comments or questions?
Yeah, what is, what's, who's the judge that ruled on, that you're talking about, the judge made the ruling?
We've had.
Judge where, like in?
We're in the housing court right now, Worcester Housing Court. And the last judge we had was this morning, was Judge Sullivan.
So it's, so I want to know where, Worcester Housing Court?
Worcester Housing Court we're in, and we're going back July 3rd.
17.
3rd is the status.
We changed it.
Okay.
Late in the day. Town attorney's on vacation on the 3rd.
And I'm on vacation on the 17th.
I can't, well.
No questions? Yep.
Bob, did you say in 2012 that the lifts were mandated to come?
Bob, did you say in two thousand twelve that the lifts were mandated to come down?
That was probably, now I'm doing this by memory.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it was, it was probably two thousand eighteen was the first trial, and I think that's when they said take the lift down. And then all of this has been going off of the first trial.
So did the lifts never go down?
We've never got permission to walk in until today.
Got it, so we don't know if these lifts were the ones that were?
Those are the lifts, those are the original lifts.
The original lifts.
Those are the original lifts, they have never been, they have not changed, that is the original lift, because I have the original pitches from two thousand eighteen. Which I'm thinking it's two thousand eighteen.
And in our packets, we see a picture from two thousand seventeen, it looks like a building that's not being used for anything. No sign of any vehicles earning on those lines, and then sure enough, in two thousand eighteen, we start to see a number of vehicles, we see a fence that probably wasn't there, and we see a number of vehicles, so my guess is somewhere in the two thousand eighteen timeframe is when
This all started.
This all started with a lift and other things. Does anyone from the public care to speak to this petition? Approach the elector, no, you can say there, you don't have to, but you approach your elector and Mr.
Philip Brooks, Twenty One East Street. Born and raised on that road. My father was highway superintendent for forty-two years, lived on that road, knew the hazes very, very well. Was an oil company there, yes. Was it contamination back then? Sure. I don't know where he's coming up with contamination now.
I didn't say contamination.
Only what's in the ground. What I've seen down there, and I live right there, these gentlemen haven't done anything to bother me any, they're not working during the day. Sometimes I see a light on there at night, the garage door is always closed. It's been like that, I'm seventy-two years old, been like that all my life. Matter of fact, it's cleaner down there now, it's a nicer place. They've been keeping it clean. I'd like to know who complained about it. Anybody complain?
I don't have my records in front of me.
Oh, I'm sure you don't. One more question I have, is anybody armed in this room? Right now?
That's, no, that's irrelevant.
No, because my safety is irrelevant. Do you have a gun on you?
I'm not going to answer that question.
No, you don't have to answer that question.
I'm not going to answer that question.
Then I don't want to talk.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is George Audi, the owner of Twenty Five East Street LLC. If it wasn't for them renting the garage from me, I wouldn't have the money to keep the ongoing ten years of harassment from my dad, a seventy-five-year-old guy, which he knew I had to buy the property off of him and put it in my name before there was anything there, he's sending them arrest warrants when he knows the property was in my name. And with Bob, it's abuse of power, I wrote a two-page letter to the town and one of the court cases, they suggested that he get off the case and hand it over to the assistant building inspector. But he has such a fixation on me that he refused to. And then over the years, so the mixed use, that property was always mixed use, when did it become residential use? When I went in front of the planning board, it was mixed use, now you see it's residential. Bob Berger went over to the assessor's office, I asked for a letter from the assessor's office, I'm like, will you please tell me why my property changed from mixed use to residential? They're like, Bob told us to do it. Anytime I come down to town hall, back when Tim was the town manager, you can't believe anything he says, because I caught him in five lies. One time he told everybody I got escorted out by the cops in the town hall because I was yelling. I came back, talked to Tim, Tim covers for him. Had meetings with the selectmen, they cover for him, everybody's covering for everybody. I have a problem with conservation, he walks over, that's not his apartment, why is he talking to them? I own Twenty Five East Street, I had to let a lawyer do a title search on the house to say it's my pond. I had an engineer, land planning that the town uses, Norman Hill, give us a sand plan saying it's my pond. Well, he made the mistake to issue a building permit without going through conservation on snow road, off a snow road behind me. And now they want to cover up for the flooded street, so they allowed a pipe to go into my pond without my permission. And then when I came to conservation, he tells her, don't talk to him, I'll talk to him. It's not his department, it seems like any department I go into the town, whether it's administrator's office, whether it's the conservation, whether it's the assessors, it's like he's there everywhere. I did a records request for communications, nobody got back to me. I reached out to the new administrator, nobody got back to me. The old selectmen, everybody ignores the letter I wrote, even though it has merit to it, or they wouldn't ask him to excuse himself on the case. So you know, today, I live in Florida, in Sarasota, Florida. I called the lawyer, I told him, what is the point of going to the court case in the morning? First of all, many, all the judges have dropped all those cases. They got mad, actually, they're like, they found out, oh, you're going after a seventy-five-year-old guy when he doesn't own the property? What if my dad's driving gets arrested for a search warrant, arrest warrant for a lift? That he doesn't know anything about, he knows it wasn't in his name. He doesn't, they don't care, all those got dismissed. Even last month, two months ago, two months ago, there was a forty thousand dollar fine, the original judge dismissed the whole case. This judge today, you know what he did to me? I asked the bailiff, I'm like, have you ever seen this in a housing court? He's like, never, I'm like, have you ever arrested anybody and we're going to send them to jail for a housing court, he's like, never. He said, never, never, the whole time they've been working there. I flew up to do my duty to come to the court case that morning of. I thought it wasn't on even, I'm like, what's the point of coming to this? What's the point of even coming to this if we have this zoning? All those pictures you have, you wouldn't even seen them or anything, because I have a lease with him. I said, if there's proof from the town that you're doing anything wrong, I didn't know, that's the first I've seen those pictures. I have a lease with him, if there's proof that you did anything wrong to break any zoning laws, you're out. There's no proof, every court case we go in, they ask him, do you have any proof, he says, no, we think they're doing something in there, we think. So you know today what they did to me, this is in America. He threw me in jail, I have to go back to my, I have company in Florida, fifteen employees. I flew up last night, I came in at midnight, I have a flight tomorrow morning at seven in the morning. I have a hardship, if it wasn't for him giving me money to battle him over these years, I wouldn't survive. So they put me in jail and we're gonna, I waited till three thirty, I'm like, wow, they're actually sending me to jail. I'm like, how am I going to make it back to my family tomorrow? Who's going to provide for them? My wife doesn't work. They were going to send me to jail until I ordered him get in the garage. This is in America. Those pictures, he would have came in today with nothing. Do you think this was a setup, that this court date was the morning of the zoning? And then they threw me in jail? It's absurd. It's abuse of power for eight years, and I would, I don't have the letter with me, but everybody brushed it off in the town. But it's from the conservation to the assessors, to the building, to my father, to me, now to them. Today, if it wasn't for them arresting me, they would have never even got those pictures. Not as if he's doing anything wrong, like he said anyways, he works at AutoZone and he does construction. He left the transport business and he does construction, neither of them do this for a job. So that's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
Pretty much, you can't, he's made up many rumors about me and many lies about me, and his word cannot be believed. To this day, me and Phil's word. Yeah.
You made that point a few times, we got it. Thank you, anyone else care to speak for or against the petition? All right. Look, you know, when I, when I look at, when I look at the aerial pictures that we had when this first came in, it sure looks like nothing was going on and now something is going on. You know, to my eye, this sure does look like this looks, you know, this is Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, this picture was taken. That looks a lot like a business going on there, I mean, I count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen vehicles parked around this building, this is in April. October of twenty-three, I see maybe even more, some probably are the same vehicles, but then there's other vehicles. Couple of these definitely were not there in April, were there in October, so it seems like different vehicles. And then when I look at the pictures that were taken today, you know, wherever they went, those, those pictures inside that building, let me just see that for a second. This stuff sure looks like a business to me. It sure looks like a business to me. And, you know, my understanding of what we're here for, the zoning enforcement officer has issued a cease and desist. And the basis of the cease and desist is the fact that there's an operation of a repair garage that's not allowed in a residential zone. And, you know, there, I think there is, everyone agrees that there was at one point this sort of a business operating there. And I, I expected that they were going to say that that business continued and there was no it never stopped. And it kind of said that, but then Attorney Lane has basically said, well, it's not a business anyway, so the whole idea of whether or not the business's grandfather is moot, it's not a business, is what they're telling us. But regardless of that inconsistency, in my opinion, the pictures tell a much different story, the overhead pictures of a multi-year gap up till two thousand eighteen where it sure looks like nothing was going on. It is, the burden of proof is on the applicant in this, in this case. They have to convince us that either, I guess they have to convince us that this is not an actual service station business, or they have to convince us that it's not, there was no abandonment. And I don't necessarily think either one of those has happened at this point. I'm not convinced that this is, is not a business. I don't know about everyone else, but this sure looks like a business to me. You know, it would have been nice if, you know, bring me, you know, bring us in all these titles, if they're all, of all these vehicles that we see, fifteen vehicles, whatever was I counted, were all owned by the applicant. Bring it in, prove it. It's a shame that that's not, it hasn't happened.
Quick question to, are these photos correct? They look great to you?
Yeah.
This is.
Yeah, I'm good, that's, that car got to go to the junkyard. Yeah.
But these amount of cars, a container? On property?
Oh, that's, that, that container is not mine.
That container is mine and so is that car.
If you're going to talk, you just have to come up to the microphone because they can't hear you on the recording.
Mr. Lane, I think you want to say something?
Yeah, I just, you know, just to follow up on your comment. You know, I understand you're, this is an unusual case, but I think what's really missing is that there's not a shred of evidence, I mean, you know, as I say, Mr. Berger is a very thorough fellow, but, you know, however long this has been going on, for six years, he has not been able to generate a shred of evidence that indicates that there's actually being business conducted here. And the reason he doesn't have a shred of evidence is because business is not being conducted here. There's lots of cars and, you know, Mr. Baez probably is a little more involved in his personal activities than most of us would be. But that's not the question, you know, you focused on it, is there business being conducted? Does he have people coming in, is he servicing other people's cars? Not a shred of evidence that he's doing that, you know, over a six-year period, if he was in fact doing that, I think somebody would have noticed. You know, people don't come in the middle of the night and sneak their cars into service stations, they come during the day, you see activity. Mr. Baez has a day job, you know, he doesn't, he's not in the business of running a service station that again, this is not the typical hobbyist, but it's not a service station either. There's not a shred of evidence that he's running a, you know, a business, there's no receipts, there's no advertising, there's no evidence that vehicles are coming and going on a regular basis, that's not what's going on, it's just not a business. It's a overgrown hobby.
Mr. Chair, can I respond to that?
You finished?
Yeah. I would like to respond to that because I hear it in court and when we're in front of a judge, I'm not allowed to talk. I have to be, I can't. This has had three trials. Three trials where we were heard by two judges or three judges, I don't really remember which. Those judges all came to the conclusion that this is a business. So it kind of gets me a little upset when I keep on hearing, there's not a shred of evidence. Our town council and myself have been in front of the judge, I've been testifying, I've produced pictures with what I see, and the conclusion is they have to stop and they have to remove. Every time I hear there's not a shred of evidence, that's just not a true statement. That's, that's all I wanted.
Excuse me. We can provide you guys with more than half of the titles for all the cars that's there. That they're ours, you know what I'm saying, I bought some, he bought some, like, we can provide you, these ain't cars that people bring in to get fixed. Like, these are all personal cars, so we can bring that tomorrow if you guys want.
And the cars, the cars that were in the garage right now, you took a pic, that they took a picture of, those cars been in the garage for over two years. They've been there parked, because I've been working on them for two years, because I work at AutoZone, so on my off time, which I don't have a lot, I go there a couple hours, that's why it takes me so long, it's only me by myself. You get what I'm saying, I don't have people going there, there's not, you can't, you could go there at any time of the day from whenever you want, and there's nobody there. After six, seven o'clock, you might see me there for an hour or two, maybe, and not even. Sometimes I won't go there for four days because I'm tired of work, I have to work seven, five o'clock, I don't have time.
So I want to tell you one thing about these judgments that are fake, that all got thrown out. That first of all, he sends them to addresses, he sends them to my house I moved out of. They sent, I didn't get one notice. They sent eight letters to my house in Medway that I moved out of, all of them dated after the sale date. He goes in and tells the judge, but I want to tell you how he gets the judges.
It's really not relevant?
No, I know it's not relevant, but I would like to say, because he brought it up, so to answer. He'll bring in pictures off Facebook, mark, of Facebook, of other people's houses. He'll bring it into the judge, him and his lawyer knowing it's not my house, that's how he got the judgment against my dad. Look at the pictures in two thousand eighteen, there's no cars outside, he got it anyways. He went into court, my dad's seventy-five, never got the letter, he showed the judge a picture of somebody else's house. And it says repair shop, and he gave it to the judge. I was there, my dad was on an oxygen mask, he can't go. And then Bob and the town lawyer both testified right in front of the judge, that's his house, that's his repair shop. Look at pictures in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and twenty-one, and twenty-two. I've been battling this to the point where I had no choice other than to rent the garage out. Before I wasn't even, nobody was even, my cousin would store cars inside, which there's no, breaks no zoning laws. He has his cars, I never charge him. From day one I bought that house, that garage always had sixteen cars in it, from the first day I bought it. He has pictures going back, that's not breaking any zoning laws. Okay, so now he uses the inside of the garage, so he parks cars outside. So I put a fence, so none of the neighbors, all the neighbors thanked me for the amount of money I spent and invest on that house to make it look good, everybody. Not one of them, there's no complaint about that house from anybody besides Bob, the whole town but him. It's the opposite, the neighbors all, like you heard Phil when he came in, they thanked me for the good job I'm cleaning the place up, and you're more than welcome yourself, drive by there, every year you see me fix it up more and more and more, you should see pictures from two thousand eleven when I bought it in foreclosure, how scary it looked. So that's all I'd like to say.
Anything you need from them to show they're not running a business?
George, if you talk, you have to beat the microphone.
We got, we got, you're repeating yourself, so. You know, this does look like a business, and I've used the word business, but I'm pretty sure it really doesn't, doesn't matter, it doesn't have to be a business. You know, it's, the bylaw talks about repair shops, things along those lines, so I haven't actually gone back in to look, see if it's, it's commercial or not, but regardless, this, this looks like a repair shop, it looks like, you know, Um, a repair shop, it looks like, you know. Well, exactly what it is. Alright, I, I guess at this point. Well, I, I don't know, what's the sense of, the sense of the board, I mean, we're, where, where we are right now is. There's a, a cease and desist, right? Operation of an automobile and or truck repair garage, uh, must remove an automobile lift, um, seesaw storage of motor vehicles. Um, on the property that violate time of drafting, so that's the idea of, of more than one.
Unroadworthy vehicle.
Okay. And how, I mean, I drove by there yesterday and it certainly is more than one roadworthy vehicle.
Well, more.
Okay. Cease use of the accessory garage and automobile and or truck repair garage and or storage facility. Uh, and then allow an inspection, um. You know, I, 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 I just, I have not heard a convincing argument that. We, we shouldn't upheld the, the zoning enforcement officer, I mean. It, it looks like an automobile and or truck repair garage. Uh, you know, um. I'm, I'm, I'm not so sure about the lift.
The judge ordered the lift out.
Well, that. We, we know how you feel about that. But, but that's not necessarily. A zoning issue.
Well, it's, it's not, but we're trying to, when we do the inspection, see if all the conditions were met that were given by the judge.
Okay.
And that's why that's in there, those were not.
George, George, you have to be up the, a microphone to speak.
Yeah, please.
I'm sorry, that's just the rules for the meeting.
Um, seesaw storage of motor vehicles looking at property violates, so we just talked about that, uh, more, no more than one inoperable. Um, cease use of accessory garage and automobile and or truck repair garage and storage facilities, that's. Kind of the same as number one. I just, I, I, you know. Our zoning enforcement officer has made this. Ruling, has issued a cease and desist, my understanding is, in this case, the burden of proof is on the applicant. I haven't necessarily been convinced that these things aren't going on, the pictures seem to say that they are, the overheads seem to say that they are. I, I, I don't see any reason to overturn this.
Um, Mr. Vice Chair?
Yeah.
So. I mean. I, I see all sides of this, it's very complicated, um, but is there any limit to how many cars somebody can own and put on their property? Is there a limit?
Unregistered or the?
So, un.
You can only have so many unregistered?
Right.
And so many in disrepair?
So, that's, that's a limit that they've exceeded?
It's one.
One, just one car?
One.
Unregistered.
Okay. So, what if that was removed, I feel like there needs to be, just because we see a picture. That looks like a repair shop, I mean, I, I.
But the, may I, Mr., the, the problem is, you know, that is just. Clouding the issue.
Yeah.
The issue is, it's in a residential zone.
Okay.
You can have a two-family house and rent both those. That garage has to be subordinate to the two-family. You can't get another rent check from some other entity. That's living someplace else to store or to do whatever in there, make widgets or, or store widgets. That's kind of the underline of where we are right now.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, so then you throw in the cars and all that, that's just confusing the fact, but we do have councils sitting right there.
I'm, I'm, well, I'm getting there, I'm just trying, I'm trying to summarize where we are as a board, cuz I think that's gonna be relevant to what he has to say.
Yeah, but that, to answer your question. It's, it's the two-family in the garage, they have to work together. And right now, from two thousand eighteen, they have not been working together, it's been a commercial enterprise where. If you were in your residential neighborhood and you had a detached garage, you wouldn't wanna have your neighbor rent that detached garage out. For somebody to do some sort of repair or make some sort of widget in that garage.
So did the zoning change?
No, zoning never changed, well, it changed in, it changed in nineteen fifty-six. Um, but I don't even know if Hayes Trucking was, you know, allowed to be in that zone.
Right.
Because that's just so old.
Yeah.
But in nineteen eighty-six, everything changed to that particular area, uh, R twenty, medium density. So when that happened, then. Zoning really wants to say, once that pre-existing non-conforming use goes away, then it doesn't wanna come back because we wanna try to. Get to the common zoning underlined district.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, you know, thank you for kind of redirecting that, you, you know, it. This is, you know, and it, this does not look like an accessory use to a residence. This does not look like an accessory use to a residence. You know, this is not somebody changing their oil in their car. In the garage, right, this is, this is substantially more than that.
But if it's his hobby, how do you? How do you say your hobby is over, you, you're way too into your cars, I mean. It's, if it's a hobby, I mean.
I think that gets to the other issues, right?
Maybe he likes lifts and equipment and, I mean, I feel like. I think that saying that that looks like a business. I, I feel like that's a little difficult for me to say, this looks like a business.
And, and that's.
If there's things that don't fit zoning and bylaws and, and, you know, unregistered cars, I mean. I mean, I, I mean, I get that that's a true, you know, rule that they need to follow, um.
But.
It's just hard for me to say it, it looks like a business, that's hard for me to just say it looks that way, I, I think, I, I need more than that.
May I just try one more thing?
Yeah.
Forget about the cars.
Right.
Forget about the mess, just forget about the cars and the mess, everything's perfectly clean, right? You have a two-family sitting over here, being rented by Mr. Smith and Mr. Jones, right?
Right.
And then you have Fred Flintstone wants to rent this out, so now you have three sources of income on that property. That's the underlying issue that we're having right now. Everything's clean, I don't wanna talk about the cars.
Right.
It's now just talking about the commercial enterprise.
Okay, so that's a whole different.
That's the whole, that's really the whole.
I think we're getting off into the weeds, I think, a little bit, yeah.
So, that's where we have been from, from day one, but we kept on getting thrown into.
Yeah.
Okay, they're doing this.
Right.
But it's, it's all, the underlying problem is. Is that, there's three there, where there should only be two.
So, I would like, I would like to answer, add something to that. First of all, mo, new zoning, a lot of towns, they don't even allow detached garages, so that doesn't happen, but in this case, this property, when in front, when I went in front of the zoning. For, in the front of the planning board for the two-family, they didn't change my use on the property, they know that garage has been there since eighteen hundred. There used to be a three-story garage there. That house has always been used as a two-family and the garage. It's always been, even when they gave me my two-family, the house, because all the neighbors went into the meeting, they testified that. It was ran as a two-family. The kids were living upstairs and they'd have other people living downstairs. So they granted that, they never put a condition on me, I can't use the garage, cuz I was using the garage at that time and I was renting it out. They never put that in the condition when they granted me the variance. And the property was mixed-use, they didn't make me make it residential, it was on the property records cards, mixed-use. That never was a, came into question, that third source of income. Even with the allowance of them granting me the variance, so what he's saying is. Not true at all, and he was here for all of it. This is why it bothers me, this is what I tell you about the multiple lies.
You wanna say something?
No, I mean, Bob hit it on the head, I was just gonna say that, um. In regards to whether it's used, being used as an auto body or not, it's, there's three rental incomes. Which is essentially whether they're making paper planes in there or it's cars, like, that's.
Should be irrelevant.
Yeah, should be irrelevant, so, I mean, what I was gonna say, if it is a car, you know, if the debate was that it's a car shop. You know, one thing that we could say is with how many, I mean, if we could somehow count up how many registered cars are there versus unregistered, could we get rid of the unregistered ones? And could you provide proof of the registered ones, but. Whether you guys do that or not, I think the challenge is that it's being rented illegally.
But again, I just explained, uh, what we were talking about, it's mixed, that property on the assessor's card, till Bob went to the assessor's office and told them make it R twenty. It used to say mixed-use on the property.
Alright, so that, alright, I wanna hear it again.
Okay.
He can't, he can't change the zoning, maybe there was a mistake on the assessor's card, I don't know. But it's been R twenty.
She did tell me herself, her, her herself told me, ask Bob, he told us to change it.
Maybe, maybe because there was a mistake on the card, but the bottom line is the zoning map has not changed. If the zoning map says that's R twenty, that hasn't changed, that doesn't change without town meeting, and I've been at every town meeting for the last twenty-some-odd years. We never changed the zoning there, so, maybe you were unaware that it was residential zone, maybe the card was wrong and that's what got corrected, but the bottom line is. That's the zone, it's an R twenty zone, and I think your attorney can explain that to you.
No, I understand what you're saying, but the specific cases were unresidential old grandfather properties. So they didn't officially make it.
The grandfather issue is not an issue per your attorney.
Yeah, so the mixed-use, I'm saying, they took it off the property card in two thousand eighteen, and when I got the var, the variance for the two-family. They never made, set a condition on me not renting out the garage. I was always renting that garage out.
Condition that says you can't break the bylaw, right, that's, that's inherent, you can't break the bylaw, they're not gonna put it. They, they also didn't put a condition on saying that you can't run an airport there, or you can't run. Any one of hundreds and thousands of other things that you can't do, right, they don't put those conditions on there either, right, they're not gonna put a condition on. That says you can't break the bylaw, the assumption is that you follow the bylaw, the special permit gives you whatever the special permit give you. Okay, so that, that's not, that's, it's not an issue. Mr. Omens?
Uh, Bob. I own a two-family. I have a separate garage. I can have one unregistered vehicle. That's roadworthy. Correct?
Yeah. Yes.
How many? And I've driven by this, uh, you know. House a few times. Um. There are a lot of cars parked behind the two-family. That's acceptable, that's understandable, I mean, people live there.
Yeah, people park.
Then behind the garage, there's the fenced-in area, there are multiple cars in that fenced-in area. And I've also seen some. As you're facing the garage, parked to the right of it, pulled in tight to that garage. There appear to be, there appeared to be. Maybe half dozen, six or eight cars behind that fenced area.
You have pictures now, Bill, and there's, I, I don't know how many, cuz I was there today.
On April seventeenth, there was eighteen cars there.
Yeah, of those, you know, you, you're allowed to have one. Unregistered, roadworthy car. I can have one registered, unregistered, roadworthy car on my lot. If everyone in town. Was allowed to have multiple unregistered cars. We'd be having used car lots all over town, the bylaws. Uh, exist to prevent that from occurring. I understand it as an owner of a two-family house. I'm not looking to turn that into a garage. I'm not looking to turn it into a repair shop for a friend or a brother or a son. Uh, that's, that's not gonna happen, so, you know, I'm, I'm concerned on the fact that. How many, if I went over there tomorrow, how many titles am I going to see? For the registered cars, and, and a title is one thing. And a, a car registration is another thing, you can have a title to the car.
Yeah.
But you don't have to register it.
Yeah.
So you can, how many unregistered cars do you have in that space where, where the owner put up a fence?
Yeah.
To accommodate. The unsightly cars that are in some of these exhibits in the photos. How many cars do you have there now that are unregistered?
Unregistered cars, I probably have like eight, nine cars in there.
Why do you have those unregistered?
Um, so I have a, a couple of old cars that I just bought from, that I've been having for. Ten, fifteen years that I've been having them, is, I just buy cars, and I like tearing cars. If I buy a car, if I buy a car for cheap, cuz I know I could take the engine off of that car and put it on another car that I wanna buy. Then that's, I, that's, that's just what I like to do.
That's, and, and I understand that, but zoning does not allow that, and I'll quote my mother. Lo, lo, long rest her soul. Who died in her ninety-first year. And as a kid, and I'm much older than this lawyer sitting here. Um, she said, you can't have a junkyard, Billy. In our neighborhood. Period. And. You may take. And set up, uh, between two trees and take an engine out. But I want that gone by Monday morning. You know, and that's why the bylaw states that you can have one. Unregistered, roadworthy car. That means that you could go and register it, and you could get a sticker. And you could get a plate and drive it off. That's not what you have in this neighborhood, and I. I'm sympathetic, I love cars. And, um, I've had a number of old cars. But I understand that I can't put a number of old cars on my lot, and it's a big lot. So, what you're saying is understandable, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't work. It's not, it's not what the town allows.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board at this point?
Um. Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, okay, so we're kind of back to two totally different things.
Yes.
Two-family with a garage, it's being rented, number of cars, like, what, what is really the issue here?
Yeah, what's.
Is there a limit on how many cars again that we can have or not have on our property? This guy has a hobby, if he's got cars that are unregistered, if they need to be, if he's, that's a law that, that's being broken. I, I mean, I don't know, I, I just, where are we with this, I feel like we're sort of, I think what Bob is saying makes more sense to understand. The two-family and the garage being rented, is, is that allowed in an R twenty versus a mixed-use, and what, when did that change, that zoning change?
Mr. Mia, and then I wanna go to our council.
Yeah, so I think, I think there's like two things here, right, it's. It's an R twenty zone, so it's a two-family. Can't be, it's not an R twenty plus the commercial there. So that's like the step number one, if you guys were somehow living in the two-family, right, Bob, that they could use that as, as part of their rental. Essentially, that would be their garage.
That would be their garage, cuz it'd be subordinate to the two-family.
Okay, George, you, if you're gonna talk.
No, he's not, the chair has, excuse me.
Okay.
The chair has not recognized him.
But I lived there.
Let me just answer that too, alright?
Then let's clear that up, cuz I think that's where.
But, you know, we're getting lost on these cars, so we're gonna clear that up right now.
Stop talking about.
No, 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 I'm gonna clear it up right now.
Yeah, right.
We're in the water protection overlay district. Can't have a junkyard in the water protection, you can't have an automobile shop in the water protective. Now, with, with, with going to repairing cars, if you have more than the ordinary household use of your contaminants, that's not allowed.
Okay, so.
So, you know, with nineteen cars taken apart, that's more than the ordinary use. Quantity, I think it's quantity of a, of a household.
Okay, so that's a new thing that.
But it's not a new thing, I had it in my mind, always, but I wanted to bring it up here because, you know, sure. If he was repairing, you know, a nineteen Chevy whatever, nineteen fifty-six, you know, we wouldn't be here. Because he's just repairing this one beautiful car. But he's not repairing one beautiful car, he's ripping them all apart and putting them all back together, or maybe selling them, we don't really know. But we do know that he's violating the three-point rule that we discussed.
Yeah.
And the. Uh, not ordinary quantity of hazardous material.
Mr. Heap, do you have anything you care to add to this?
Uh, I do, and thank you very much, and hello to everybody, um, and thanks for having me tonight, uh, sort of my, my sort of thoughts on. The presentation we've heard tonight, or a couple thoughts on, on the presentation we've heard tonight. Um. One that, you know, one thought coming in was that the applicant might try to establish this as a prior, pre-existing non-conforming use. I think on that, um, issue, what I've heard, um, from the applicant, the facts don't. I think on that, um, issue, what I've heard, um, from the applicant, the facts don't rise to the level of supporting or establishing this as a pre-existing non-conforming use. There's been no conclusive, um, discussion of when this use began and nor has there been any conclusive discussion of, you know, establishing that it ran uninterrupted um, from whenever it began lawfully until now. There was discussion of the, um, temporary cessation, involuntary or not. I don't believe that, that is relevant. So, again, in order to establish a prior non-conforming use, it would have needed to be lawful when begun and continued uninterrupted until, uh, until now, and I don't believe we've heard those facts. Uh, if it were not a business, um, you know, it would need to be a lawful accessory use to the residential use of this property. I think it is absolutely clear that, that the principal use of this property, um, under zoning and under the special permit is as a two-family dwelling. There is a garage on the property. Um, in order for this to be a lawful accessory use of this property, it would need to be customary in the town of Grafton. It would need to be incidental to the residential use of the property and it would need to be subordinate to the residential use of the property. Um, I think, um, when we start seeing things like a lift, which is, I think, uh, I think could be commonly understood to be an incident of a commercial auto garage. Um, and the volume of cars that we're talking about here, um, stored on the property for long periods of time. And I believe we've heard, um, that the, you know, the repairs that are ongoing are being conducted by someone who was not a resident of the two-family residential dwelling. You know, it seems to me that what we're talking about, that the ZBA could well find that to be beyond the scope of a permissible accessory use of residential property. Um, I think, you know, really the, the exercise here is, is, is looking at all of the facts, looking at all of photographs, looking at all the testimony from the building commissioner. Um, and, you know, asking, is that an accessory use of a residential piece of property? And I think the evidence could well support a finding that it is not. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions, um, but those are, that's sort of my, um, my takeaway from the presentation that you've heard tonight.
Questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, uh, you know, I'm kind of getting to what Ms. Reed was saying. I, I'm, I'm boiling this down to two issues. One is, one is, is the fact that they're storing more cars on the property than is allowed. So it's, it's just the quantity of cars. That, that's the one issue. The second issue is this idea that the garage is accessory to a residential use and, you know, I, I know I said previously that this doesn't look like it's not a business. It, it more so doesn't look like it's a typical accessory residential use. It just looks like it's, that, that's not what you expect in the residential zone. Um, and it's, just does not seem customary to me, so that's why I'm having a hard time with, 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 you know. That's why, I guess I agree with, with Bob's position. So it's those two issues is, is that garage in ways being used accessory? Um, I like the word subordinate, but is it an accessory use? And it just doesn't feel that way. Now, there seems to be some confusion about whether Mr. Baez, I guess you're both Mr. Baez, right? Is, lives there or not? And I thought that he didn't.
I don't.
He doesn't.
The renter doesn't.
No, I, I don't, I don't. He don't live there. I live there.
You live there.
I live in twenty-five.
I live in Southbridge.
And I, eh, he lives in Southbridge. I live on East Street. And my truck is the one that's in there. My cars is the one that's in there. His, his truck is the one that's on the outside, um, that says the I O C or whatever. That's, but me and him work on cars, me more than him, but.
All right.
I have a question. Is that truck of which you speak registered?
Um, yeah, I, I got the plates and, and everything, yes. It moves and everything. The only car that's on the property that doesn't move is the crash stop that's there, because I'm having a hard, a hard time to take it out. All the other cars move. Put the key on, turn them on.
I'm, I'm struggling with where to go here, uh, at this point. Um, it's, you know, it seems like the customary thing would be, you know, um, well, we close the public hearing, we wanna do that and, and, and kind of get to the point of a decision. It would be a, a, a motion to, you know, I guess overturn the, um, you know, the, the zoning enforcement officers cease and desist of whatever date. It would be something like that. Well, I guess it was really, I mean, we, we would have to get to that point, some sort of a vote like that. And I, I can tell you that I, I would not vote in favor of that. I would not vote to overturn the, the zoning enforcement officer's decision. I don't know how others feel. Um, if anybody wants to point out how they feel about it.
I'm still confused. I don't know if I could vote right now based on, I'm still trying to figure out. I mean, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I haven't, I've never been in this position where I, I feel like I need more information.
I would like.
Mr., Mr., Mr. Yomans?
You know, I'm not confused. This is a two-family house. It has a garage. It's supposed to have one unregistered, roadworthy vehicle. That's what the zoning allows. You said in your statement that you have six or eight. Uh, I could have six or eight based on what you've tried to accommodate. And I understand the love of cars. I've suffered with it all my life and have spent thousands on my love of cars. But if you want to have eight cars, then you have to rent a garage that is zoned properly to have those eight cars. You don't have to call it a business, but the zoning bylaw does not accommodate what you wish to do. And therefore, I would not vote along with the chair to overturn the decision that Mr. Berger has issued, the cease and desist decision. Uh, I, I, I go along with that. I think that's a, that's a fair decision that he made.
Mr. Chair, just another question. Is voting on just the cease and desist or, or any one of the five? Do all the five?
That's a good question, so I'm, I'm gonna actually talk that to Mr. Heap. You understand what, what Mr. Thomas was asking? Cause I think I've got the same question I could.
Yeah, what are we voting on?
Um, I think you could frame a motion, uh, any number of different ways. You could vote to affirm the order in full. You could vote to overturn the order in full. Um, I think you could structure a motion that, that attempted to sort of parse through the five components and um, do different things to the various components. That gets a little bit tricky, however, in the sense that the ZBA would need four votes in order to, um, alter or amend the, the order in any way. Um, the orders, the building commissioner's order is going to be affirmed, provided there's fewer than four votes to change it or overturn it. I'm not sure that, that answer fully explained it, but, um, you know, i- it's, it can be as, I think, straightforward or as complicated as the board, uh, wants to, wants to make it. But the board always needs to have their eye on the quantum of a vote that is going to be needed to change anything.
So, so just, you, you got a little twisted up there and I'm, I think it's, let's, let's be clear. Any action we take in this case requires a super majority for affirmative votes, four votes.
Yes.
Any action we take. Right?
A vote to, well, a vote to overturn the building commissioner requires a super majority.
Second session, um, counselor, can you hear me?
Everyone does.
I can.
All right, so, you know, I, I, I think at this, so, so to the, to the board, um, you know, my intention for, for this specific case, unlike so many others that we do, would, would be to have town council draft some sort of a decision for us. My intention was that we would continue, um, tonight, um, or maybe we'd not necessarily continue, that we could close a public hearing, um, but, but we would actually act on a decision at a, at a future meeting. The problem is, I, you know, I think we, it would be good if we could give council some direction. Um, and I, I don't know that we, we're necessarily there, so I'm struggling with, with what we do at this point. And I'm also very sensitive to the fact that, you know, it, it is eight-thirty at night or thereabouts and we have two other cases we need to get to and, and those people have been very patient for the last ninety minutes, so, um.
I mean, three.
Well, one of them, one of them's gonna be, um, continued. They've already asked for continuance, so we got, we have two. Um, so I, I'm inclined to just continue this, leave the public hearing open, continue this, um, and, and reconvene at, at our next meeting. So, timing-wise, Katrina, what's the, when did this come in? And when do we need to have a decision by, you know, when, when would the hundred days be or whatever it is?
So this was stamped in on May seventh. So. Let me count.
So, Council, we don't, we don't, we don't get this that often, so, um, we have to open these within sixty-five days. When do we actually have to issue a decision? Is it?
I'm running, I'm, I'm running my date calculator right now, because I never trust my own, uh, trust my own math. But, so if this stamped in on May seventh, the board has one hundred days from that date that the application was stamped in to vote a decision, which would be August, Thursday, August fifteenth. Um, and it has another fourteen days after that to produce a written, uh, decision and file it with town clerk. So there's the dead, the deadline, the board is under no obligation to actually vote this applica- appeal until August fifteenth.
All right, uh, what I wanna do is I wanna continue this to, um, sometime in the future. So let's, uh, let's talk about availability, um, for, for a follow-on meeting. Um, it's important that all five of these members are present, uh, are able to be present. I can tell you that I'm not available, uh, for the next few weeks, but, um, like the twenty, Thursday, the twenty-fifth of July, how does that look for people?
What's? July twenty-fifth?
July twenty-fifth, Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm good.
Jeffy?
Brooks.
Yeah, I'm good.
Let's do it. Let's do Thursday, July twenty-fifth. We'll continue it until then. What we do at that meeting, I don't know, but, um, yes.
Can I ask something?
Yeah.
So is there something that we can say to the applicant, like, give them, like, something else we would ask for them to do, like?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, what could they do to help further their case or what do we need or? And are we trying to overturn these judges that, that made?
No, no.
I mean, but the judge, judges made cases and they already ruled on it, and are we allowed to even make it?
These, out of, Mr. Chair. Out of the order that you have in front of you are the, um, the judge's orders. So.
And you're following what the judge is telling you to do, so.
Telling us to do.
Right, so we, by overturning, if we were to, were to, we'd be overturning a judge's decision.
There's no way we can do that.
No, I know. No, so that's why I'm trying to.
That's a total misunderstanding. There has been no.
Mr. Lane, please.
Yeah.
Mr. Heap, I, I'm gonna go to you at this point to help strain this out here a little bit, um.
Um, I think, you know, Bob has referred several times to the, the sort of the history of the litigation and perhaps it would be helpful if between now and the twenty-fifth, we, you know, put, put together a brief letter, um, just highlighting that procedural history for the ZBA. I think it is absolutely correct that, um, the ZBA can't or shouldn't undo, you know, what, what the housing court has already ruled, but it would certainly be helpful to the board members, I think, to have that, um, in front of you in, in written form, so that you can all, uh, you know, have it for reference as you're continuing to uh, hear the case and then ultimately deliberate on it.
Okay, I'm, 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 I'm absolutely fine with that. I'm just, I, the thing in my head right now is, is it relevant to what we're doing here? Cause I thought what we're acting on is zoning, Grafton zoning issues.
That's absolutely right.
But, but the, the court case is, are relevant to what we're doing or just?
I just, you know, I, it's, to me, the, maybe more, these questions come up, perhaps the more information that you have in front of you, the, the, the better.
Okay.
Just background.
It's background, okay, all right.
We can, we can, we can sift it for relevance as, as, as we go, but just, we can answer the factual questions.
Is there anything else that anyone, uh, on, on the board would like between now and the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, based on what we discussed, it sounds like you guys need proof of the lease that we've already talked about, that you've lived there and you're using that as your personal garage. And I think it's no, there's no surprise that it's an R twenty zone, not com- it's not commercial use. So we've already learned that it can't have eight unregistered cars. So you have to provide proof that those unregistered cars are not there anymore and for whatever cars are there, you show proof of title.
Title.
So those three things?
No.
Registration.
That's just, uh, re- registration and, and title.
And that's one.
That's just.
One member speaking.
Okay. And again, I'm just giving you guys like the opportunity to come back and like, you gotta prove that it's not what, what's in front of us.
Mr. Yomans?
The clarity of the zoning bylaw says that you can have one unregistered, roadworthy car. Roadworthy.
Turn the key on.
To me.
Yes.
It, that, that just means it starts. Roadworthy means that I can take that car and I can register it and I can get an inspection sticker. If you, you know, unless that.
Anything else that anyone on the board wants? Mr. Lane, do you have anything briefly to add? You, 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 you wanted to speak before I close.
Oh, yeah, I, I was just gonna point out that, and Attorney Heap will, I'm sure advise you that no judge has made an adjudication, uh, on any of these matters. There's been some preliminary orders, but there's been no adjudication of any kind.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm sure, like you said, I'm sure he'll, he'll.
I was gonna.
All right, so at this point.
Can I say one last thing, please?
Briefly in it.
Very brief.
Very, something new.
So, Mr. Yomans, no, I wanted to say like my whole point at that property, everything, none, you see no neighbors here in protest. Nobody's saying it looks like a junkyard.
You've made that point.
But beside, and the next thing I was gonna say, the law, the law states for the unregistered cars, if it was outside, cause before, if they're inside, I can, any unregistered cars, they can move them inside. That, that law doesn't apply to that, so that could be easily, I can have them, they can move them inside if they have to be inside.
And I'm not saying whether that's correct or not. Uh, all right, at this point, I'd entertain a motion to continue case number, um, where, where'd it go? Case number nine zero three to July twenty-fifth, Thursday, July twenty-fifth at seven P M.
So moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Hearing numb, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Yomans?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Uh, vice chairman votes yes. All right, so we're continued to July twenty-fifth. Uh, next order of business, we'll take, um, let's do one, One Bedford Drive, I guess. Is anyone here for One Bedford Drive? Come on up here, please. Um, were you here when I read the rules? We, we're.
Who are you speaking to, sir?
And who's here for One Bedford Drive?
Well, all of us.
Okay. You all, you all were here when I read the rules, so I don't need to.
Seven o'clock, sir.
Okay.
So I, what?
I'm not gonna read the rules again. You've heard them, um, you wanna just read the petition, please?
I don't remember the rules, so if you would like, I would like them read again. I, I mean, I don't know what you're referring to.
Again.
Okay.
Okay, the way we will proceed is, uh, the clerk will read the petition, petition, after clickers read the petition, petitioner will have the floor and will have the opportunity to present their case. There'll be fifteen minute time limit. Petitioner has a time limit. Fifteen minute time limit for the petition. This time limit can be extended with the extension of the board. The petitioner shall present required information. All comments should be specific. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition will have an opportunity to do so. Any letters in favor will be acknowledged for the record. Anybody in opposition will be allowed to speak and any letters in opposition will be acknowledged for the record. The opposition will also have fifteen minute time limit. After all evidence presented, the board will enter discussion and will come up with a decision. At any point during this hearing and prior to a decision being made by this board, the petitioner has the option to request that the petition be withdrawn without prejudice and continue until a later date at which not further evidence, supported petition can be presented. Anyone wishing to speak, please approach the microphone and give their name and address. Board may ask questions time to time, however, all conversations should be directed through the chair. And at this time, it asks the clerk to read the petition.
The Grafton Board of Appeals has received a petition from Robin and Kenny Bonin for One Bedford Drive requesting that the zoning board of appeals grant a special permit to remove the current one-car garage and replace with a two-car attached garage.
with an in-law apartment above on a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The board will conduct a public hearing on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four at seven P.M. in Conference Room A. Any person wishing to be heard in conjunction with this request should appear at the time and place designated or by letter to this board in time to be read at the hearing. This meeting will be a hybrid meeting conducted in person and remotely. Zoning Board of Appeals, Brian Waller, William McCusker, Kay Reed, William Yeomans, Peter Adams, Jiffy Thomas, and Alex Mihah.
Guys, one second, for some reason, Zoom just got knocked off.
You got it, sir.
This is a tough night.
Yeah.
Sorry, well, we all appreciate all-town officials, because, I mean, this is a small dose of what you guys deal with twice a month.
Yeah.
In person, never mind what you do on your, you know.
A regular day.
Right, your homework, you gotta, you gotta do homework, you gotta do.
Yeah.
So we appreciate yous.
I didn't do my homework.
Thank you.
We were just here Monday for a meeting, too, so it's been a long week, extra-long week for us, so.
Bedford, Bedford, Bedford. If you remember what you hear before, you have the floor.
Okay, board, thanks for hearing our case. We're here for a zoning determination on, we want to take down a one-car garage in a breezeway and turn it into a two-car garage and an accessory apartment for the son. It would allow the son to help the parents and the parents to help the son. And they've raised their son in Grafton, and he'd like to continue to do the same thing. The design of the, the accessory apartment would be two bedrooms, a living room, a small kitchen, a bathroom with a washer and dryer, and a two-car garage underneath with enough parking in the driveway for another two, two to four cars. Anything you want to add, Ken?
Yeah, we're just trying to get it so my son can move home, because, uh, over the last ten years, well, I've had some bad times. I've fallen, had four operations. And to have him home to help me with taking care of how his yacht work, snow removal, stuff like that would be a great appreciation to us.
Okay, so hang on a second. Did we get name and address from either one of these gentlemen?
Oh, no, you did not.
So.
I did sign in, but it's.
I bet you need it.
Uh, no problem. It's James Crossman, seventy-six Milbury Ave, Milbury, Mass., oh, one five two seven.
Okay, and then you, sir?
Ken Bonin, One Bedford Drive.
One Bedford Drive, so. All right, so, we don't have a zoning determination.
But I can do it, I can do it for you.
But this is, they, they need a special permit because they're extending or altering a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Right.
Bingo.
Well, I was gonna go a little more, so you could write it down. It was built in nineteen fifty-seven.
Nineteen fifty-seven?
Nineteen fifty-seven.
Recording in progress.
It was built in nineteen fifty-seven, out there. The zoning on this is, I'll get it. All right, twenty?
R twenty, yes.
I don't know right now if you're in the Water Protection Overlay District.
They are not.
I'm hearing they're not in the Water Protection Overlay District. The existing structure, it, it appears to be eleven feet, six inches off the side setback. And, and that's where they want to extend it on this plot plan by Jarvis dated April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. So in my opinion, this meets a pre-existing non-conforming structure, therefore, under three, four, three, five. All it needs is a special permit or a finding.
Okay, so, um, it looks like, all right, so the existing garage in Breezeway are being knocked down.
Correct, sir.
The, um, looks like the new building will be eleven feet, six inches off the, um, off the side lot line, which is further off the side lot line than the garage is right now.
That's right, we're gonna be farther away after.
And this, this plot plan doesn't show, I don't suppose you know how far the, the, um, the current garage is off that side yard, do you?
Hi, my name's Matt Bonin, One Bedford Drive. It's about nine feet, six inches.
It's, it's ten feet, it says ten feet, doesn't it?
Yeah, ten feet.
On my, on my plot plan, it's marked ten feet.
Really?
Can I see that?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Yeah.
I don't know what, I'm sorry.
Yeah, see, they, they didn't, they didn't put that number here.
Um, I wonder if that's a, yeah, that's weird, I don't know why that.
Unless, was that the revised one?
Four twenty-nine, I don't see. I don't see a revision date. Can we have that?
Absolutely.
Jim, let me see that one, is that the one, hold on. That's a different one.
All right, so it's ten feet?
The original's ten feet.
Yeah.
I had a, a big one done, and that might be the, what, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I did have him revise it, because you asked me for a new measurement, so maybe that's what he gave me.
And the proposed is eleven-six.
You guys can keep that, no problem, sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
It's making it less non-conforming.
Correct. Right, the R twenty zone, course, fifteen-foot side yard setback, structure is located ten feet off the side lot line, right?
It's gonna be further off the property line.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be eleven-six when we're done.
Right.
We're gaining a foot, six inches, yes.
All right, um, R twenty, so, go with that one, go with that one. I mean, there's actually other things that make it, I mean, the lot is not big enough, right? The lot is only eighteen thousand square feet. But I'm not gonna get it, we got one, that's all I need. I mean, the front and, and the other side are okay anyways. All right. All right. Any comments or thoughts from the board?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chair. Bob, and they're allowed to do an accessory apartment in?
They've already gone in front of the Planning Board for the accessory apartment. So they, they hit that hurdle, that gave them the use, this gives them the building permit.
Did, did you get the special permit from them?
Uh, we went through, they, they vote next meeting.
Yeah, so I, I think.
Well, they voted, they voted yes, Fiona's gotta write the decision. So they'll write, they'll vote on the decision in two weeks, but they did vote yes.
Okay, but we would do a condition that they obtain the special permit for the planning board.
Right, okay.
All right.
When I drove by, which of you two were doing the lawn?
That was me.
Yeah, I'm the contractor, I'm the contractor, that's his house, and that's his son. Shame on you, it should've been you.
I'm not allowed to.
I think I saw that. I drove by.
Recording in progress.
You're gonna have a problem with this recording.
I know. I know. We may have to take the Zoom recording.
All right, um, current use is a single-family residence, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, current home is, how many bedrooms and baths?
Three bedrooms, one bath.
The proposed, including the accessory apartment, would be how many bedrooms and how many baths?
So, uh.
Five bedroom, two bath.
I, I thought I had previous discussions where they were gonna take one of the bedrooms in their house and turn it into something else, but, but it's their house, so if that's what they say.
It might be like an office.
Yeah, yeah, if that's what they say, then that's fine.
Okay.
It's their property.
All right, the neighborhood consists primarily of residences. We said this is not in the WSPOD?
Correct. And Town, Water, Town Sur? Yes.
Yes.
All right, any other comments? Any letters and received in favor or against?
No.
Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against? Anyone on Zoom wanna say anything for or against?
Nope, she doesn't have her hand up, so.
All right, then, boy, it's been, I'm out of practice, do I do a motion to?
Do a motion to close the public hearing?
No, I, I, I think I never used to do that, but Brian does, I don't know. So I'm seeking a motion to close the public hearing for case number nine oh four.
So moved.
Second.
And then also, I'll appoint our two associate members, Mr. Thomas and Mr. Mihah, to be voting members on this case. So, on the motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Mihah?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Vice Chairman votes yes, all right, public hearing is closed. Uh, sounds like we're all basically okay with this, I mean, it sounds like it's very straightforward. The Planning Board really is one asset to have a lifting here. You know, issuing the special permit for, um, you know, for the, for the accessory apartment. We're basically given the permission to make the house, to alter the house. All right, so the Planning Board's taking care of the use, we're kinda taking care of the structure. So to that end, for findings, I have finding one, that the structure was built in nineteen fifty-seven. Finding two, parcels located in the R twenty zoning district. Finding three, the R twenty zone requires a fifteen-foot side yard setback, and the structure is located ten feet off the side lot line. And I have, based off of findings one through three, the current structure is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Then for finding four, uh, the current use is a single-family residence. Finding five, the current home is a three-bedroom, one-bath home. Proposed home is a five-bedroom, two-bath home. Finding six, the neighborhood consists primarily of residences. And before I go further, Mr. Yeomans, you seem to wanna say something.
Should we make a note that it is a change that will make it less of a non-conforming?
Recording in progress.
Um, that, that can come up here, so finding seven, the proposed change is.
Will make, will make it less.
Non-conforming.
Non-conforming.
More conforming.
No, less, non-conforming.
Devil negatives.
Existing structure. I'm okay putting that in there. So, unless somebody wants to add anything else, and I have findings four through seven. The proposed addition is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Somewhere, somewhere, oh, the neighborhood consists primarily of residences, okay. Uh, and then this is not in the waterplex, WSPOD. So then that doesn't matter, bah, 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 none of that matters. So, I think that's what we have for findings. At this point, I'd entertain a motion, where'd my case go? This time I entertain a motion to grant a special permit. Let me just read this, nine oh four. Yeah, okay, so I, I think the motion should be something along the lines of what it says in, in the note, in the notice. Grant a special, Zoning Board of Appeals, grant a special permit to Robin and Kenny Bonin, One Bedford Drive, so those are the owners?
Yes, they are, yep. They both.
To allow, to, to remove the current one-car garage, replace a two-car attached garage and in-law apartment above on a pre-existing non- just, get rid of that last word, so we don't need this, not on a pre-existing non-conforming, that doesn't matter. In-law apartment above, as depicted in Exhibit A. So you've got something we, they can have for Exhibit A?
I just need them to sign it.
Um, subject to the condition, subject to the following conditions, and there's only one of them. Conditions. Condition one, um,
Planning Board.
Yeah, no, special permit from Planning Board is obtained to allow the accessory use, is that what it is? Is that what they call it, accessory use?
Accessory apartment.
Accessory apartment, yeah, thank you, I didn't think that was right. To allow the accessory apartment. This, the condition one is a special permit from, from, the Planning Board is obtained to allow the accessory apartment. So that's a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Mihah?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chairman votes yes.
Thank you for your time, boy, appreciate you.
Sign right there.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Sorry we kept you this late, but.
Like I said, it was entertaining, and don't take it the wrong way. It was interesting for a while.
It's a good case.
Three times, I'm going away.
Oliver, just to let you know, I have fourteen days to write the decision.
Oh, yeah.
Um, after that fourteen day gets filed with the town clerk, then there's a twenty-one-day appeal period. After that twenty-one-day appeal period, you need to come and pick up the certified copy from the, the town clerk. You need to take it to the Worcester County Registry of Deeds, get it filed, and bring a copy back to me.
Okay.
So with that being said, you also have to wait for your twenty-one-day appeal period through the Planning Board from, again, the fourteenth-day A-file. Get your building permit application in, because we're three to four weeks out for original review.
Yep.
That way, hopefully, everything's reviewed, you've got everything in.
Okay.
We can swap.
You got it.
Make sense?
Thank you, yes.
When are you, when are you gonna be ready to submit?
A week?
If you submit after July one, you're in the other energy code.
Yes, oh, you got it, I'll be in before July first.
Which is Friday, and we close at noon.
Okay.
Or we close at one.
Okay, that goes from fifty-two to forty-two.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a great one, you.
Good night.
Do we have another one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Next order, order of business is case number, um, nine oh six, we'll get to nine oh five at the end. Nine Logan Path, I assume, Mr. Nugent, is that, is that how you say that?
That's me, I'm win, yeah.
Okay, and obviously you can hear us, and we can kinda hear you, you're a little broken up.
Yeah, Sam on this side, it kinda coming in and out, so I hope that it works out okay.
It's, it's better now. Did you hear me read the, uh, the way we'll proceed and all that? Do I need to read that again, or did you hear what I wrote for?
I heard it, we did, yes.
Okay. Just ask the clerk to read the petition for the record, please.
The Grafton Board of Appeals has received a petition from, um, Mr. Nugent and Kim Wong for Nine Logan Path requesting that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant a special permit to allow the reconstruction of a new home on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The board will conduct a public hearing on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four in Conference Room A at the Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road in Grafton. Any person wishing to be heard in conjunction with this request should appear at the time and place designated or by letter to this board in time to be read at the hearing. Let's see, this meeting will be held as, as hybrid and can be, will be conducted in person and remotely. Zoning Board of Appeals, Brian Waller, William McCusker, Kay Reed, William Yeomans, Peter Adams, Jiffy Thomas, and Alex Mihah.
All right, um, you have the floor. What would you like to talk to us about?
I think he's gone.
He is gone, but you know what? He's not gone from here, so we've gotta, we gotta just do this, right? Unmute and start your video just for the hell of it, right? I don't even know if you want to continue the hearing. And, because this thing keeps on kicking out, and I don't know if I can help. Let me see, do you have a microphone?
Can he call us?
Well, I just wanna see if he can hear us first.
Can you hear us?
You can hear us, but we can't hear him right now. Okay, so, let's go to your speaker.
Recording in progress.
Now, now, I know. So we have to, we have to.
We have to.
There you go. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna work, because he's frozen there. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna work, because he's frozen there, and he's not frozen here.
I can, I can see Katrina, I can hear you guys. Are you guys able to see me and hear me?
We can, I'm sorry, Bill.
Yeah, you might wanna even turn off your video.
Yeah, I was just.
We, we don't need to see you.
Okay, so. Okay.
Cause you're frozen.
Uh, wha, whatever works, okay.
Yeah, and, and that may help the audio as well.
Um. So, okay, um, okay, so I am looking to get a, um, special permit to remove non-conforming, um, house on nine Logan, and replace it with a single family. Um, and, uh, if you look through the documents, I think, I see that, um, it'd be a little more than two years ago. Uh, there was something similar that was requested from this board, um, so, and it was approved. Um, so I'm trying it with the new, um, this applicant, application, uh, and the new, the home that I'm looking to build. It's very, very similar to that home that was approved in the past in terms of, uh, the, the dimension. And, and I did that on purpose, uh, hoping that, you know, it was approved in the past, uh, for something like that, that, you know, um, that it can be approved again. Now, there's some changes, and I did the changes, um, well, it was better based on the layout of the plot, um, and also the zoning requirement. Um, I moved the house back a little bit to give it a little more, um, front yard, because I think the house, um, where it is right now, the, the existing house is quite close to the street. Um, and also by moving it back a little bit, it gives us a little more side yard as well. I know it doesn't meet the requirement, but it does give us a little more space for the.
I know. Oh, but is he still with us? Yeah, he's still with us, so.
Foo, are you still there?
But you gotta turn your speaker on.
Hold on.
And then just turn this off, the overhead, how are you gonna get the echo when it comes back?
Well, everything's gonna echo, but I don't even know why we're not, you know, we'll unplug, unplug that.
My screen?
No.
This?
No, you should be able to tell, tell it to use your speaker. See, what speaker are you using? The arrow, there.
Oh.
Put this microphone on her speaker too, that maybe, so I can pick up broadcast. I don't know what's going on, I got an unstable connection in there. I know.
Foo, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Oh, good, so we did it. Oh, good, and then put that right on, wherever your speaker is.
Yep, we can hear you.
Good, excellent. Oh, sorry, Bob, that was my fault, I got a big foot.
Not sure how much you heard, but, um.
We heard, we, we heard, we heard very little, so start over.
Okay, okay, so, um, in applying for this, uh, uh, um, special permit, I look at the whole application, because I know in the past it was approved, and so, um, I try to, I try to have the new house, um, be very similar to how it was before. Um, and if you look at the, uh, plan, um, the house dimension, I actually moved the house back a little bit, um, so that it can, it can, I can get a little more frontage, because I know the house right now, it's very close to the street, and I know that the requirement, um, the requirement, um, that requires that the house, you know, the setback could be a little more, and so that's why I moved the house back.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yep.
I have a, um, a little issue with what I'm looking at right now. Under three, four, three, five, it talks about extending, altering, it doesn't have the words reconstruction. So, the other permit that was probably issued, which I don't know about that other permit, it was to remodel and fix up and add. Once you take down, you lost your grandfather, we're not supposed to say grandfather rights, but you lost the protection of forty A, that's a better way of saying it, and I don't know how that's gonna happen here if he demolishes the whole thing and takes it up. Now, maybe we should start talking and thinking about rewriting the bylaw under three, four, three, five, and put the word reconstruct. But then we have to have a whole definition of, can we move when we reconstruct? So I don't know how you can get where you wanna be on this. Because if it's a pre-existing, non-conforming, and we follow three, four, three, five, we don't have the words reconstruct. That's why they always leave that one wall, or do something, and then the wind falls, and the, the falls down, and they make that wall a little bit better.
So, so, all right, this sounds like we really need the zoning determination. And first of all, I wanna confirm that the applicant can hear me.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Foo, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
And, and you heard what, what Mr. Burger was saying?
Just now, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, well, Mr. Burger was, was expressing concern about the idea of knocking down the house that's there and building a new house. You heard him talk about that?
I, I, I do, um, and, uh, you know, I, um, I'm not familiar with the, uh, the zoning, um, um, section that, uh, that was quoted, but, you know, just from layman's understanding, um, you know, when I appear in front of the board, um, to ask for a special permit, my understanding is because of that, because, you know, you, you, you look at that holistically, what, you know, what the project is, and you see it's, you know, if it's feasible, um, to do, then you provide that permit, because otherwise, if I have to conform to the existing, um, house, then, uh, I'm not sure it really needed to go through the process to get a special permit. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm making sense.
Well, you have to, if you, if you were gonna build on this lot, it has to meet, meet its setbacks. Which, you know, it's, it's not meeting its setbacks right now on the left and on the right.
Right, right, and hence, that's why, you know, uh, I'm going through the process of, you know, asking for it.
Question. So.
Because even if, if the existing non-conformity, the structure that, that's here now, doesn't meet the current bylaw.
So.
You know.
All right, he, he, here's the thing, if, if I am, if, if I understand correctly, and I'm talking more to Mr. Burger right now, if we issue a special permit right now, I don't think you're gonna give him a building permit to reconstruct this house.
Not when he says demolish.
Right, so, so the fact, the, the problem is, you, right now you have a pre-existing, non-conforming structure that can be extended or altered, but unfortunately, and, and I guess this is a nuance of the law, or the bylaw, or court uh, hearings, proceedings, whatever, the fact that you're talking about knocking down and building new, or reconstructing, that's not covered in that section of the bylaw. So what Mr. Burger's saying is that he would not issue a permit, cause what you're doing is not necessarily allowed. I think what you should do, and I'm desperately trying not to give you advice here, but I think what should happen is you probably need to come in and meet with the building department and talk through what you can do on this lot. I assume he hasn't done that?
No.
Yeah, so I, I think you need to come in and talk to them and understand what you can do, and what, what you can and can't do. Um, and then perhaps come back to us with, I mean, if you wanna come back to us with exactly what you have, fine, you know. We can continue this, so that you don't have to go through the filing and all that again, um. You know, our next hearing, our next meeting day would be the twenty-fifth, and, and we could even continue it again after that if you needed more time, but I, I'm, I'm very concerned, I, I think this board would be very inclined to give you a special permit, um, to modify that building, I mean, it would be an improvement, I was there today, and it looks like that house is almost ready to fall in. Um, so I, I think it would be easy to get a special permit from us, but I, I don't wanna give you a special permit, and then you can't do anything with it.
I have a question of Mr. Burger.
Mr. Yeomans?
Um, a quick question. Is the fact that he's moving it back to make it less non-conforming, as far as he's, he's, he's gonna have more frontage, and he's gonna have wider setbacks?
No, I understand, under, and I, I authored this bylaw, three, four, two, four, which says if you have a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, or a pre-existing, non-conforming structure, and you wanna build off of that, you gotta meet the so, zoning setbacks. So because he doesn't meet it on left and right, I wouldn't be able to give him the permit. I think if we sit down, we might be able to come up with using something to get him where he wants to be.
I, I, I think so too, I mean, part, part of, you know, the, the, the pinch points are actually front porch.
Right.
You know, could he do something with making part of the front, front porch smaller? I mean, I think there may be things to do, but I think that, you know, he, he needs to come in and sit and go with the development.
Can he use part of the foundation? Can he use part of a wall?
Right.
Yeah.
Does he?
I mean, that's, that's what we're talking about. And, and you know what? Maybe next fall, or next spring, when we do zoning, we should have a meeting with planning and try to look to see what forty A, has that improved a little bit with reconstruction? I don't, I don't know, because my head is in our bylaws, and I don't try to get out there.
Because if he does do it on the existing foundation, and not set it back, is that allowed?
Well, if he uses part of the foundation and extends that, and abandons that, but that's the original part of the foundation,
then it.
that could do something for him.
Okay.
Sir, do you, 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 are you hearing this conversation?
I do, I do, and I see the problem with that, and, um, I'm, I'm open to, you know, see, go see the building department to get, um, the advice, um, um, but I, I, and I think, you know, maybe we just talk, you know, kind of the technicality, um, you know, the, the bylaw, that, because I, 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 um, I, I do think that the way that, the location of the building now actually works better for the, for the lot, which is the way the dimension of the lot, because maintaining the, um, the foundation, the existing foundation, I think would require the building to be sort of up from the lot, which is closer to the street, and that would actually, you know, make it, give more violation of the current zoning, because I think the setback for the fund is a forty feet?
Thirty.
Thirty feet.
Thirty, oh, thirty, okay. Um, and maybe, oh, yeah, maybe thirty, then maybe with the existing foundation, I don't have it in front of me, and maybe the existing foundation need to be fine, maybe that's the, that's a midpoint, and then, you know.
I think we should sit down with your plans, what's existing, and what, what your hopes are, and let's see if we can come up with a plan that we can go in front of the ZBA and try to get you what you, you're looking for.
Okay, all right, let's do that.
So, so you, you'd like a continuance?
Uh, yes.
Uh, I move that we continue case number, um, nine zero six to Thursday, July twenty-fifth at seven PM.
Some more.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Um, actually, I, I should make sure, there's nobody else on Zoom that may wanna say something? Okay, um, there's nobody in, in the room. Um, all right, so motion made and seconded, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Mihaj?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Uh, Chairman, Vice Chairman votes, uh, yes. So, um, yeah, so you, what you're gonna wanna do is get together with the development team, you know, Mr. Burger and, and his team, talk through what you're trying to do, um, it's okay, if, if you're not ready on July twenty-fifth, that's fine, just let our secretary know that you want another continuance, or, you know, you need a little more time to, for updated plans, or whatever you may or may not need, uh, and, and we can continue it again if, if need be.
Um, if you wanna, if you wanna come by, give me a call tomorrow morning, I should be in by eight-thirty, and we can see when you can come in and talk to Bob. Okay?
Sounds good, yeah, sounds good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next order of business is case number nine oh five, and I understand we have a letter requesting a continuance?
Yes, the attorney was unable to make me sign.
All right, so, uh, motion to continue, and make sure the record reflects that no testimony was heard.
You have to open it first.
I just did.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Um, motion to continue case number nine zero five to Thursday, July twenty-fifth, seven PM.
Some more.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Mihaj?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Vice Chairman votes yes. All right, um, it's late, I'm not doing minutes. Um, oh, uh, Prentice Place. Um, so I dropped the ball a little bit on this, um, after Mr. Yeomans did a great job advancing the ball. Mr. Yeomans got us to about the twenty-yard line, and I fumbled. Um, but anyways, um.
Mr. Yeomans doesn't work.
Yeah, Mr. Yeomans, um, noticed that, um, Prentice Place had not quite followed the, the landscape plan, and I'll let you talk in a second. Um, and met with, um, uh, the applicant, the developer out there, and kinda went over some of the things that were wrong. Um, and there is some proposed changes to the landscape plan, and the real, the question tonight is, what, what do we do, um, with those, with those changes?
I kinda gave you guys in your packets, like the email chain going back and forth, and the pictures from Bill, so just.
Go ahead, Bill, you're on.
Yeah, the, the, the net of it is that I had noticed that a, a Don Redwood that was discussed with the developer and with the landscape architect was not planted. I raised the question, and then, uh, I met with, uh, Sotier, the developer, and my conversation with the landscape architect, they had proposed two Don Redwoods, or actually three Don Redwood, Don Redwoods, to be planted in the area where it points, it comes to a point at Prentice Street and Shrewsbury Street. That, uh, was unacceptable because of the size of the tree. The landscape architect then said, okay, we'll do one, and since then, the one that they had proposed was going to be planted in the spillway of a detention basin. That was not, uh, recommended by our, uh, Jeff Walsh. So the, you know, that's not gonna be planted, that's an alteration of that plan. The, the part that is, uh, the back part of the lot, uh, abutting the parking spaces, uh, they were going to have a number of pines and, uh, spruces along that edge, that's inundated with, uh, this Japanese knotweed, which is a very invasive species, and they have, uh, some grass planted there, but the, the species that they were gonna put there, which is a very straight-up white pine, was not available. So they wanted to look at alternatives, and I think at this point, we should ask them to put together a plan for alternatives to that space. And the reason that, uh, I, I, if, if you look at the pictures, Japanese bloodroot is, uh, uh, not bloodroot, knotweed, is a very invasive species of weed. And it's all along, they put up the fence along the parking lot, and that we, we directed the developer and the architect to do that, to give some screening, the people on, uh, Matthew's circle there behind it. And these trees, we're going to give it more screening, because the pines that they had proposed can get twenty feet high. It's not, it, it's a white pine, but it's a very upright white pine. That's, that's not available, so I think that we should ask them to put together a plan to plant that area as it was originally intended to be planted with alternatives. The only question I have in my mind is that this in very invasive weed, here's the fence, it exists on the other side of the fence, so if you get rid of it on this side, it's very hard to get rid of, then it's still going to, you know, come across. That fence is not gonna, uh, contain the root structure of that, that weed. So I, I think we should just ask, uh, Sotier to come together with a, uh, another plan for that area and acknowledge the fact that we're not going to plant anything in the spillway. The Don Redwood can be eliminated, it's a very big tree, and just come up with an alternate plan for that area in the back, abutting the parking lot in front of the fence.
So, um, yeah, so I, I, I think the thing to do then is, is have. So, um, yeah, so I, I, I think the thing to do then is, is have, is, is tell Sotier to, to, well, exactly what Bill's saying, come up with a plan and, and come before us and let, and let's talk through it.
Okay.
The, the question I have, well, let's see if everyone else is in agreement, um, the, the question I have is that knotweed, well, I expected grass, I expected to, there to be grass between the parking lot and that fence, right? And, and I believe, incorrect if I'm wrong, but I think that if something is planted with grass and mowed continuously, that's gonna take care of that knotweed. I would think that that, if that's being mowed regularly, the knotweed's not gonna grow. Think I'm, what do you think about that?
No.
Is the knotweed planted or just it's, it was there?
Uh, it's, it's there.
It's just there, okay.
It's, it's, knotweed is everywhere.
Yeah, okay.
And it, it's also on his lawns. It's, it's in a lot of his lawns and they're dealing with it by killing it.
Yeah.
There, but, uh, and the, 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 the space of the planting, of the grass is no, no deeper than this desk.
So, yeah, it's about that one.
And then the, then the weeds are here and you can go look at the pictures. The weeds are here, then the fence is there. Um, I, I, I think that they would have to dig it out. My, my concern is that fence, that, that knotweed is also on the other side of the fence in Matthew's circle. That fence is not gonna contain, those weeds are gonna still come out. It's very, very tough to eradicate that, that Japanese, uh, knotweed.
Can he do both, like, if he wanted to pull it, no, he can't go on the other side?
But right now, he's got grass, like, as you just said, there's grass and it's five feet or so going in, there's probably five and probably more, maybe five, seven feet of knotweed. So, so they are managing to have grass on part of it. And I guess, I just look at it and I say, why can't you, whatever you're doing for that first five feet, why can't you do it for the next seven feet? And, and I, and I'll, but, but also if you look at it, the five feet next to the, the, the driveway is nice and flat and you see where that's intended to be long and then it kinda is, there's a, there's a hump.
That, that, that grass area exists because the, the point of disturbance was in front of that. So they dug out, they dug out all of that knotweed when they put in the berm and they put in the parking. That, that, and, and it shows on the map, if you look at the maps, on the landscape maps, it shows the, uh, the limit of construction disturbance.
Yep.
When I spoke, when I, I spent time with, uh, with Sotier and he said that I cannot disturb that and I said, no, that was a limit of disturbance for the construction. That has nothing to do with the...
Now that it's finished.
You know, with the landscaping.
Yeah.
So, uh, I think, you know, I can, I can call Sotier and meet with him and say this is, or you can call him, Katrina.
I can call him, I can give him a call tomorrow.
Yeah, let's see, let's see if we can come in on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
And, and, and they, and it doesn't have to be planted, it, it could be, they could come up with a plan that has a fall planting or it can be the spring planting. It's not like it's, you know, we've missed the best, the best part of the planting season for spring.
I'll give him a call tomorrow.
All right, anything else, uh, what?
Yes, real quick, three Bridle Ridge, the pool.
Oh, God, no, it's done.
No, it's finally done.
Okay.
Um, Pam Nichols charged him sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for the piece of property that he needed. He finally got, I finally got a copy of the purchase and sale, a copy of the deed and a copy of the filed A and R. So I said, we need final inspections, Tom is scheduled to go out there tomorrow to do the final inspections. Once they pass and we close it out, I can let Chris know and they will drop everything, everything will get closed out.
All right, there's nothing we need to do.
No, I just wanted to give you guys an update to let you know that it's finally, after two years, been settled.
Okay.
And what was the other one?
For sixteen thousand dollars.
Hey, pools are costly, you know?
Oh, you don't wanna know.
Oh, that's cheap.
Sixteen thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Was there anything else on the, uh?
Yeah, am I missing any else on the agenda?
No, that was it, just minutes, but we can table those till July.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Um, all in favor, excuse me, we're not really on Zoom anymore. Aye.
Your life vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we're not on Zoom.